So we're going to get started even though I was hoping that we had more people here representing District 3, at least District 3. This is information that we want to get out there to the residents of District 3. But I want to thank everyone that's here today, and your input is very important to us. But before we get started, I would like to pledge the Pledge of Allegiance so we can all stand, please. Captain, would you like to lead us?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, Captain. So my family are all veterans, and I was told that we messed up the Pledge of Allegiance every time we say it. It's supposed to be one nation under God, not one nation under God. One nation under God. So again, thank you. These are representatives from Twin Lakes and representatives from Edgewater condos. Thank you for being here. I'm just going to show you a real quick video of what has been accomplished in District 3. So I'm just going to start it real quick.
The reclaim water issue has been something that we have been fighting for over 17 years. This development was built with the connections to the reclaim water, but we never had access to the main plant to bring us the water. And finally, finally, the community is getting slowly all hooked up to reclaim water. I got my hookup sometime in the middle of October, and it's working fine for me. An average of 2,000 gallons per iteration, probably my spent 20,000 to 30,000 gallons, and it still isn't even close what I used to pay before.
My name is Castle Robertson. I'm at Haversham Road and in the Saxon Ridge subdivision, and I'm wanting to commend the mayor and the commission at City of Deltona for putting in the arrow, green arrow traffic light at the corner of Saxon and Finland. It has helped tremendously for our subdivision as well as the citizens of Deltona and anybody that comes to our area. It's been a long time coming. I've been in this subdivision for 15, almost 16 years now, and I've actually been talking to the county as well as the city with the city commissioner prior to the ones that are sitting now. And it's awesome that it's there.
My name is Charles Casner. I'm the president of Edgewater Condominiums, and I've been the president for 12 years. This is my 13th year. Several years ago, the city wanted to put in a park and also walking trails. It's improved the quality of life because we have 312 units here, and the vast majority of people love to either bicycle or walk, and so they gave them opportunities to walk this. Plus, they put in a park right across the street that is used by residents that have children here. And so it's made all of us like, I walked a trail, and I'm 88, and I think it's made all of us healthier, and we're really enjoying life because of this project.
Thank you. Thank you, Lee. And so those are some of the accomplishments that we have done in District 3. Requesting, these are requests from the residents of District 3. We try to do as much as possible. Nothing happens overnight, but if you give us time, eventually we will get everything done. I don't know if you guys have noticed on Deltona Boulevard, we have installed the crossing lights, and they have the flashing lights on. We have upgraded the streets where we have, the city has painted the crossings lines on it, and there's more to come in that area. And so first of all, just for those of you who don't know me, I am Maritza Abila-Vasquez. I am the commissioner for District 3 and the vice mayor for this year. So to give you more information as what's going on in the area of Deltona Boulevard, which is also part of the CRA project, I would like to introduce Jerry Mays, our economic development and ecological tourist manager, and he's in charge of the CRA project, has been since I was elected. And even before I was elected, we're trying to, you know, see if we can finally put a closing to the CRA project on Deltona Boulevard. I know we came up with something, the residents loved it, unfortunately fell between the cracks, not on our fault, but hopefully we can get something going and it can pass this time around. I apologize for the way the seats were set up today, but they got the room ready for the CompStat meeting tomorrow that's happening here as well, so it was easier for, you know, for us to accept this setup and have it ready because it's at 8:30 in the morning. So I'm sorry. And you could turn the seats if you want to for now, okay? So here's Jerry Mays to go over the project for Deltona Boulevard.
Thank you, Maritza. Thanks, Maritza. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to be talking about the CRA. This is what has progressed in the CRA, the plans that we have, and we'll start off with just a little bit of history on it. There we go. This is an overall map of the CRA. It was, CRA is Community Redevelopment Area. It was established in 2016, so we are still working on it. It is what is known as a TIF, TACR, incremental funding. In 2016, all the taxes were right here, okay? I apologize, I set my cane down so I can move both my arms now. All right, in 2016, the taxes were here. The city and the county both got those taxes, there was no change. But the next year, the taxes were just a little more, and that delta between them is what the city and the county got. And then each year, going along, as we brought new businesses into the CRA, we've had two racetracks, Hardee's, other businesses come into it, that increased the tax value in it. On Deltona Boulevard, 1,200 Deltona Boulevard, the Veterans Administration Clinic came in, Crunch Fitness came in, Family Health Source, and a lot of other businesses have come into that plaza and the other plazas, and all this makes the tax commercial income to the city come in, which is good, because with that extra income, we don't have to raise taxes on homeowners as much. Okay? So this helps in that fashion, and that's my job, to recruit companies into the city. So I divided it into three areas so we could talk about a little bit what the CRA has. This is the north side. This is Saxon Boulevard to I-4, and then Normandy to Deltona Boulevard, that one section. I'll start out by saying, when the CRA was established in 2016, it had one goal, one goal only, and this was transportation. In other words, what we're looking at, and it'll go more into it a little bit into the presentation, which I will try and get through fairly quickly, but what we're looking at is we have a really bad curve in North Normandy. People jokingly, or not so much jokingly, call it dead man's curve. In other words, you have the wooden barricades up there, and they get knocked down, hit, whatever, by cars. About once a quarter, four, five times a year, somebody runs into them. It is a bad curve. It's a 35 mile an hour, but people go down to Deltona Plaza and imbibe a little bit, or down on the further south end of Deltona Boulevard, and then try and drive home and don't make the curve. Mainly, it's cars going north. So that's one of the areas that we want to improve. We want to four-lane that section of road so that there is better control, people have better control over their vehicles. A four-lane road tends to have less problems on people crashing than a two-lane road. Captain, if I misstate something, you just feel free to jump in and say, "You idiot? You can't say that."
All over the city, four lanes in Deltona.
I go along with that, yeah, so people can move, and I don't have to set at the stop sign. Okay. But this section, we wanted to also redo that intersection at Deltona Boulevard in North Normandy. What we looked at when we started looking at the transportation in the CRA is you've got four lanes that turns into two lanes, that turns into four lanes, that turns into two lanes, and that type of thing. And this is bad. It's caused what is known as weaving, people having to change lanes, okay, at crunch points, one of them being Deltona Boulevard in North Normandy, and then expanding that in the weaving when you get up to Saxon, because it goes to three lanes at that point. Right hand turn, straight through, left hand turn. So if we can sort of match it up all the way through, what that will give us is basically all the way up to Howland Boulevard, all the way down to Dirksen, okay, would be at least a four-lane road. Redo that one area at Deltona Boulevard and Normandy for that intersection, leave South or East Normandy a two-lane road. It's not a main feeder, okay? But have the main road be Deltona Boulevard running all the way up to Howland. That way, you don't have to get on I-4 to traverse in the city north and south. So it's very, very handy to have something like that, and it's a major safety factor. The central section is all four lane. Deltona Boulevard from North Normandy, that intersection, all the way down to the post office, four lane. In fact, the four lane goes all the way down to Enterprise Road. Now at Enterprise Road, it turns back into a two-lane again. So again, this is an area that we want to try and rectify. Now, the issue being, it takes a long time to build up enough money to do major road changes. Not road repairs, but road changes, adding two lanes, so you have two lanes in each direction. Chances are, we'll end up having probably to take some houses in that dead man's curve. But the city looks at it and says, "Okay, that's in the future," and there's no way we can do that type of thing at this point. Plus, the price of houses has just gone sky high, so, you know, nobody can afford anything along those lines, buying multiple houses, okay? But it takes a long time to get enough money. The whole idea was, adding the money up from the TIF, is we would get enough money to match the River to Sea TPO, the transit people. This is money from the federal down to the state, down to the county, over to the TPO. So it just takes time to get enough money, to get 30% or 40% or whatever the match will be required at the time. And this, again, is the major thing. This is what the CRA was built for. Now, having said that, there have been a lot of changes in what we're doing at the CRA. Now we have a master plan that calls for street lighting improvements, that's good. Bus stop improvements, in other words, new shelters, this is not benches, but the shelters. We had a contract with the company. We no longer have that contract, and they don't maintain the bus shelters that are out there. So the city is looking at, no, we're not going to go out and get any contract with another company. We'll go ahead and put in our own bus shelters, and we will maintain them, because the other companies weren't maintaining it. ADA sidewalk repairs and safety improvements, the curb improvement, I was talking about dead man's curve, okay? The intersection improvements, that was in the powerpoint north, that's Deltona Boulevard and North Normandy. Again, the major part of it, expand North Normandy, Deltona Boulevard to Saxon, and Deltona Boulevard, Enterprise Road to Dirksen, into four lanes. And then as an add-on in the end for the economic development, which is the reason I'm here talking tonight instead of someone from Planning and Development Services, is I want to put in commercial sewer on the north side of Saxon, so that area, many of the houses are empty between the Walgreens and the racetrack, and it is already zoned commercial, and let's start getting some businesses in that area. Again, almost none of the houses out there are homesteaded, which tells us they're rental houses. Okay, they're still homes, we understand that. But if we can get commercial developers to come in, which we've talked to developers over the years, the issue is for them to buy the houses so they can tear them down, so they can build on those lots, and put in sewer, they can't afford it. They can't get enough return out of it to make it a feasible project. So we're looking at putting sewer on the north side of Saxon for that commercial area. Some of the things that we've been doing, and it just goes down the list, okay? Street lighting improvements. We have done improvements at Saxon and North Normandy intersection, had upgrades there with new fixture and higher wattage fixtures. The next area is North Normandy to Deltona Boulevard, and we're working on that, again, with additional lighting. All the lighting is on one side of the road. What we're looking at is put additional lighting on the other side of the road, okay? And it is directional, but it will be brighter lighting. It's very scientific, and I'm not good at science, okay? So it's very scientific as to the way the lights are focused and how much light. If you have too much light as you come up to an intersection, it confuses drivers at nighttime, so I'm told.
Jerry, is that why there are purple lights on I-4 now?
They're defective lights. All over the state, they're popping up. Those lights seem to be replaced, so we got the lights from the same, the Eftoff got the lights from the same vendor, or something.
And they're going bad, the filament in them.
Even though I like the purple lights.
It's neat.
I clearly like the purple lights, but it's definitely a defective light.
I mentioned a while ago that we're going to be using, putting in our own bus stops. So what we have right now, staff has requested bids and specs from different companies. We've had one contractor that met the bids and specs and gave us a bid. We met with Votran regarding the locations of the different bus shelters and what we were going to have to do to make them ADA compliant, because many of them weren't. They're on a slope, the concrete, okay? And a lot of them are sitting on the sidewalk. You have to get off the sidewalk and walk in the dirt behind it and come around it, okay? So what we've had to do at this point is we've, after we, based on what Votran told us, we've gone out and we're having surveys done of all five of the sites. In other words, here's where it is, we want 30 feet this way, 30 feet this way, 30 feet this way. We don't need to go forward, or we'll be out in the road, okay? But we need to figure out where we can put a new bus shelter and still have ADA compliant sidewalk go along behind it, not through it. So we're planning on three bus shelters by having them up by the end of second quarter of 2022. It takes time to do all of these things, so that's what we're working on right now. ADA sidewalk repairs, safety improvements. The vice mayor had mentioned that we have the blinking signs in the road now at two different crossings on the south end of Deltona Boulevard. They have been out repairing sidewalks along stretches, especially of North Normandy. Deltona Boulevard sidewalks are in pretty good shape. North Normandy was not. So repairs are being done there, and we're going to also, for ADA, start connecting sidewalks that are not connected at this point. Now, it's a sidewalk loops around a block, but there's no way to get off that sidewalk, through the grass, across the street, through the grass, into the sidewalk at the next block. So we're going to be hooking those up, and that'll be done by Public Works. They have a contractor, yes?
Let me give you the mic, because this is being taped, so they can hear you.
So as the commissioner knows, I frequently ride around our area on my e-scooter, and I will tell you what you're talking about on Normandy and even Providence. Even if it wasn't a scooter or bicycle, you can't make the turn, like when you're going down the sidewalk, you got to actually come to a almost complete stop to make that sharp turn to get into the crosswalk, and then you got to do it on the other side. I don't know what they were thinking when they designed that, but it's not very, you can't ride the bike or scooter on the street.
They were trying to come up with something, and again, I've been here since 1983, okay? So I've seen a lot of foolishness going on. All right, so the idea was, they wanted it to go up. They weren't looking at the turn or anything. They wanted to, if you notice, most of them go up, so water could flow underneath them.
Right.
Okay, that's fine, I guess there's a point to it. But that was their main concern, having a sidewalk where water could flow underneath it, because that's the whole idea there, the little bit of swell catches the water and it runs off the road and everything. Okay.
Yes, he does ride a scooter.
Curve improvements, that's dead man's curve. Right now, the River to Sea TPO has told us that to do a study of that curve and the improvements would cost $40,000. Right now, the state is not sending money down to the TPOs for research and studies. They're sending money down for projects, but not the research and studies. So we would have to pay the $40,000. We do have an application in, we keep holding on, hoping that, you know, we'll get a break on that, because, okay, there. We're looking right now, we got that study done, which was for the redo, redevelopment of Deltona Boulevard and North Normandy, with East Normandy coming out the bottom side of it. But we don't know if it's going to be a roundabout or just enlarge the intersection, what it's going to be, okay? We don't, and that's the thing, we don't have the money for that yet. We're still trying to save money up to meet the match that will be required. So we're still years away from these projects. It takes many, many, many years to get enough money to do these large transportation projects. The city has never really accepted the idea of bonding to get this done, which is what most cities end up doing. They bond it, get it done, you have the additional growth, you have the income coming in out of the CRA, which pays the payment for the bond, and you have all the improvements done. But it's sort of a keep saving until you get the money, is what we're facing right now.
Jerry, if I may, do you know where the suicide curve that he's talking about is?
Yeah, the bar drop.
Right, Piedmont and all that area, yeah.
Yeah, you go too fast, and you end up down with the Moskowitz ducks.
It's on Normandy, so it's before Pied, so from Saxon Boulevard in, it's about three or four streets in, and then a curve, and it has a yellow sign, a speed limit sign. So that, a couple of times, we've had cars actually, you know, not gone on top of the homes because of the rail, but really ugly accidents there.
Really an awful place to have a house, anyway.
It truly is.
Like, I'd imagine that car rails there because there was probably a serious accident or something.
And we've changed it a few times.
Yeah.
And that study that you're talking about for the $40,000 would have to be completed before that project can be started, even though there was a previous study? Is that correct?
No, there was not a previous study for that. The previous study was for the redo, redevelopment, redesign of Deltona Boulevard and North Normandy, that intersection where the light is, there's a T there, okay? That was for that. And the reason we went ahead with that is the state did come up with some money, put it forward. That study was $40,000, and we ended up paying only $2,500. $2,500 versus $40,000. That's why we're sort of holding off on the other one, because like I said, even if we had that study, if we paid the $40,000 and we got the study, we're still years away from being able to do anything with it. So, and this is just a little quick talk about the Saxon sewer. We have a consultant currently underway to try and come up with best options on getting that done for the commercial sewer. Per board approval, staff has met with Volusia County to discuss the use of city-county funds for sewer, which brings up another thing. We are in a charter county. If you have a CRA, the county has to approve you're having a CRA. You can't have one on your own, okay? Because the county is putting money into it, just like the city is, okay? When the CRA was done in 2016, the only thing the county was allowing the CRAs to be for, used for the funds, was transportation improvements and utility improvements, utility improvements being non-municipal utilities. In other words, you can't take county money and put it into a city sewer system, okay? But we have approached the county to discuss this. At this point, I'm not going to say, "Oh, they were very receptive, they weren't receptive and everything," but the discussions are going on. So at least they're talking to us at this point. Other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. The three bus stops that you talked about, can you tell me where they're going to be located, the three new bus stops?
The exact same spots, more or less within 20 or 30 feet of the ones where they are now. There's one on Saxon by the Halifax Health Urgent Care Center, to call it that. You come around the corner, and there's one on Deltona Boulevard, right in front of where the bank used to be, that brick bank, which Stafford Commons comes, you know, turns off there where the Dollar General store is. Okay, you go on down a little bit, there's another one at the post office, go on down a little bit, and there's one in front of what used to be Sun Bank is now Melhimes Insurance, and then one across the road just past...
Is it okay?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so that's the five locations.
Is there a chance we could look at the one in front of the condos? Because there's elderly people that sit and wait for the bus, and the bus stop is actually in the grass, and we basically go to war every month with the county and city to cut that grass, but they wait on the sidewalk for the bus. They don't sit on the bus stop because it's in the grass. So if we could maybe look at it. I mean, there's not many people that take the bus from our condos, but there are elderly people that do get on the bus.
That would be something, truthfully, you would need to, okay? There's a pecking order that we have to deal with.
I want to be top of the pecking order.
Okay, there you go. All right, be the cream on top. The city more or less owns the bus stops. Physically, the bus stopping there is Votran. If you, and what you're talking about is a bench, there's no shelter there. I know this is what you're talking about, okay? There's a bench there. Okay.
I mean, but it's on the grass, even if it was a concrete slab, at least...
That's what I'm thinking right there.
And there's one on each side, there's a bench on each side of the street, so...
But open on the sidewalks, like concrete and grass or something, because there's also bikers in that area, too.
Oh, yeah, definitely. No, no, right, yeah, for sure.
But here's what we're looking at, all right? There's a conflict of interest there, because number one, the city wants the bus stop, yes? The city probably, we could get the city sometime in the future to put a concrete slab there so the bench could sit on it instead of being in the grass. The right-of-way belongs to the county. They own Providence Boulevard, so it's not the city saying, "Yes, we want it there." Oh, we can tell the county.
We get it.
Okay. It's one of those things, I mean, there's...
We can show up, we put a slab of concrete?
Well, you got Providence, Saxon are the two major feeders within the city that... Well, you got Providence, Saxon are the two major feeders within the city that are not city thoroughfares, T-fares. So it's something... Look, my email is jmayes, J-M-A-Y-E-S, at deltonafl.gov. Send me an email.
Definitely will.
Okay. Send me an email, and I will address that with the city manager. Or my Commissioner will address it with the city manager. Or the Vice Mayor would address it with the city manager.
Got all these titles. Would that be ADA compliance issue as well?
Absolutely not.
No?
Not if it's in the grass, because someone with a wheelchair cannot sit to the side of it like that in their wheelchair and maneuver to get back up onto the sidewalk to get onto the bus.
The wheelchair needs to sit there and have to wait in the street. And the bus would have to pull up in front of our room to get them on the bus.
So it's not ADA compliant?
No. The one right out here in front of City Hall is ADA compliant. When the bus pulls up, they lower the bus down, because there's a ramp, and then you come right up into it, and your wheelchair can go into the bus.
Yeah, send us an email, we'll follow up on it. Did you have a question?
Yeah. Basically, I love the plans. It's alarming to hear that it's years off. I really think that it's kind of past due, especially with the expansion of the people coming in. I feel like when we allow developers to build in our community, that we should be demanding... Like, my mom just built a house she had to pay impact fees.
Okay, okay.
What's that gonna do with...
Understand this. The only thing, only money that can be spent in the CRA is the CRA collected money, unless the city says, okay, we're going to do this. The city got grant money and spent their money to put in the flashing crossings.
Right.
Okay? That was not CRA funds.
Let me finish with that, though. But I feel like, especially on like Deltona Boulevard, there's so much unused...
Are you part of that area?
I live in that area.
Where do you live?
I live near Twin Lakes. So, you know, Cloverleaf, Deltona Boulevard, like, we live there. And I just feel like, we can do so much more with, like, I think there's like, what used to be a bank with cars that are just parked under it? Like, it would be nice, tear that down, modern live... Let's go down to Lake Mary and see what they have going on down there with the, you know, live, work, play area. I would like to see more restaurants come into Deltona. There's a lot of residents that live where we live. We shouldn't have to get in our cars and go to Orange City or go to Sanford, just to do what I would consider our normal things. I feel like if we can somehow encourage businesses to come here and, you know, developers to develop that area, maybe you can get some of the money to fund the project somehow.
Okay. I understand where you're coming from on it. We have very little development potential, other than that commercial area up at Saxon. There are one or two... I'll get it.
Jerry, I'll get it.
The main thing we can do is try and redevelop some of the areas and raise the taxes. Thank you. Raise the taxes up that are collected on that commercial property.
All right, yeah, I would love to see some of that, some of those commercial buildings are just outdated. Like, maybe it made sense in the '60s and '70s when Deltona came in. But it's just, now, we could do so much more with that space and keep people from having to... You know, we just went to Orange City before we came to this meeting. You should have seen the cars on Saxon. We had to wait for like two traffic light cycles just to get through. I mean, we should be able to stay in Deltona, in our local area, and have options. There's enough people who live here.
Agreed. Okay, that's the CRA presentation. I noticed on the thing, there was an issue on Echo. Was there a question on that? Or anything else I can answer for you right now?
The Echo project would be by Lake Shore Drive, am I right?
Okay, and that's not my project. I'm very familiar with Echo, okay? But that is a Parks and Rec and Public Works project down there right now.
Right. I wish I had known that, because I thought it was still under you, and this is why these ladies are here? Because that's their area?
What would you like for me to answer about it?
I don't know. What would...
The biggest thing right now, I mean, I get the whole project. I went to the meetings, and you guys came to the condos to talk to us. But we, and this is for the city manager, you know, to... They promised us a buffer, because right now, what we look at, we leave our condo, beautiful view of the lake, you know, that's nice, but it's a pile of debris and the black paper that's there separating. We just want a couple of high bushes temporary to block that, so it still looks like our natural area that it was before.
Yeah, and I can answer that. The city ma... The active city manager is working on it, and they are going to be ordering, you know, plants and buffers to put there temporarily. We're also working on developers that, you know, looking forward to being able to build here. And one of the things that we are asking them is, are you willing to relocate trees from one area to another? Or buy trees? And so, you know, we're trying to work with that as well. So we will... A buffer will be going out there. It's not going to be the one that you had, unfortunately, but there'll be something going on there.
If anything, I mean, just something so it doesn't look as unattractive. I mean, the lake looks weird, but if there was, the thing of hedges right there...
Yeah, and it's gonna, it's gonna look like that until the project is finished, until they, you know, put everything in place.
Yeah, and then it is in the plans to put in buffer, overstorey, middle story, understory, to block that. But if it's put in now, it's going to get destroyed putting the project in.
And I totally understand it, but what we had there before, like, what, taking all that stuff out, I get the purpose of it, but it, I mean, for us who live on Suiya, which is that block right there, we pulled in, it completely changed. We were in, we pulled in, it was an overhang of trees, and now it's just...
Yeah, we were in a beautiful green space, and now we're in a barren...
I mean, it really looks bad.
Yeah, we're going to work on it. Again, until the project is finished, we can't do anything. And in all fairness, what the city touched was city property. So we're trying to, you know, make our residents in the Edgewater condos happy again by planting the buffers and stuff. But right now, it won't make any sense, because when construction starts again, they're just going to break, you know, or cut them down. But it'll be back. You know, we give you our word that it will be back. And we're looking at other areas that are building new homes and stuff, and asking, can you look, when you start clearing, what trees can be moved? So then maybe we can take some of the greenery that it's already grown, and is it possible to relocate to your area? I know that...
The pile that's there is going to stay. Is that part of the...
What pile?
The pile they left behind?
No, that's gonna be cleaned out. I mean, it's, everything is gonna be cleaned out. There's a nice project going on for that area, which, I'm looking forward to doing a meeting in your section, because we used to have two meetings. I used to have two meetings. One here and one over by Lake Shore Drive. And if I can't do it at the center of Lake Shore Drive, I will ask you permission to do it over by you. Because their residents, they all come out to meetings. I mean, they really fill out the room, which sometimes is standing room only. So I really look forward to having another town hall.
We've already had one.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to having another town hall.
The only thing is, is that if you, you try to have a town hall there, you're a pavilion? Yeah, they have to park it, so if we dig it, well, there's no party, there's no starting.
Who?
If you invited everybody, like...
Well, it has to be an open meeting.
Go along with that.
You guys have to walk or street.
They can walk.
They can walk.
They can walk.
I'll pick him up.
He'll pick me up in his moped.
Thank you, boy.
But if there are any more questions for Jerry, again, you know, these are the plans the city has. I know Jerry's heart is in it, because he lives in this district. And we're just, you know, looking for ideas, input from the residents and stuff like that. And hopefully, you know, even if I'm not here, I'll be, you know, coming to fight with Jerry so that it can be pushed and we can see the difference on Deltona Boulevard. Because I live there. I live, well, I'm not on Deltona Boulevard, not too far away. Any other questions for Jerry?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So, where did I put my... Let me just get my cheek off here. Just to request, there are forms in the back, if you can fill them out. There is a form for the, a health form for Evan Health. If you could fill it out and give it to me before you leave as well. And before you leave, also, I have some home test kits for COVID, thanks to Family Health Source. So before you leave, please remind me to give you one and some hand sanitizers from the city of Deltona as well. So our next speaker is going to be Captain McDaniel. I don't know if, how many of you worked with Captain Marino? I know he went to a few HOA meetings. Saxon Ridge, I know he went to, I think he went to the Fourth of July event at Edgewater. Yeah, I think he came very quickly and left, and Sheriff Chitwood as well. And what I like about our Sheriff's Department is that, when I ask them to come to our meetings, they're always here. They're always available. If our captain can't make it, they always send a representative. You have one of their sheriffs at the, you know, at the Twin Lakes meeting, which gave a very nice compliment, the fact that where he lives, he doesn't see that. He doesn't see the involvement of the city bringing the deputies to be involved in their HOA meeting. So he gave us a nice compliment, and he also complimented the Sheriff's Department. So having said that, Captain Marino, or Chief Marino now, got a promotion and left us, but we're not going to hold it against him. He did get a promotion, and we, you know, we congratulate him. And we're happy that we have Captain McDaniel here with us, who's going to give us a little briefing on the city of Deltona under his command. Let me just take this out of here, because I'm blocking you.
Good evening. I hope you don't mind if I sit. It's been a long day. As Vice Mayor said, my name is Captain Kyle McDaniel. I've been with the County of Volusia for 22 years. I've spent a majority of my career in and out of the city of Deltona. I was a patrol sergeant here in the city of Deltona. I was a CID sergeant here in the city of Deltona. I was a lieutenant here in the city of Deltona. So I've spent quite some time in the city of Deltona. I have dealt with the city commission, the city managers. I'm fairly familiar with the inner workings of city government. A little bit about myself. I grew up here in Volusia County. This is the only job I've ever known. I've been on our Sheriff's Office SWAT team for 17 years. I am currently one of the commanders of the team. And I've spent a majority of my time in investigations. Prior to getting promoted in December, I was Assistant Commander of our Investigative Services Section, which ran all of the detectives throughout the county, including the city of Deltona. Monday evening, before the council, I gave an end-of-year report. That report was, in my eyes, very impressive. Our Part I crime statistics were at an overall clearance rate of 51%. That means that we cleared 51% of our Part I crimes, which are serious crimes, our burglaries, our larcenies, our homicides, our arsons. We cleared 51% of those. The national average is 31%. So the men and women that you guys have working for the city of Deltona, for you, the citizens, are doing a heck of a job. And I'm pretty, I'm pretty impressed with it. With that being said, I'm more than happy to answer anybody's questions. I spoke to Rachel beforehand. We will have a public comstat meeting here in this room tomorrow morning to discuss crime for the comstat period of December. So if anybody can make it, I know it's during business hours, most people have to work, but I'd love to, I'd love to see some citizens of Deltona in the room. With that being said, does anybody have any questions for me? No? I, and the Monday evening commission meeting, the commissioners, the mayor and vice mayor, had made mention of bringing all the HOAs together to talk about what the Sheriff's Office can offer, the HOAs on technology. We currently have one HOA in Deltona that has tag readers at the ingress and egress of their community. I mean, this is something you will have to pay for, but I would like to at least have a discussion about it. So I think the commission will move forward on that, and then the Sheriff's Office will be happy to discuss that.
Hey, so when you guys came to our HOA meeting, this was discussed, and I think there was a mixed response in the room from the folks, whether they were supportive or not. I will tell you that our residents, we do want cameras, we're going to look into it. You guys reassured us, though, that, and they couldn't tell us where the location of it was, but you guys already have plate readers on Cloverleaf and Anderson, which kind of lead into our subdivision. So I think it's kind of, I did watch that part of the, of the meeting on Monday night, so just to give, you know, my response to it. We're certainly going to have a board meeting again, and I'm sure we'll bring it up. We recently discussed possibly upgrading our, and again, we need to discuss this as a board, our, the connection for the phone, for the gate can be converted into like maybe broadband, and maybe we can get some type of broadband type of camera of a cloud storage, be a little more efficient. But I don't think, I mean, I can put it, I can ask the residents of the community to vary.
Yeah, I think the issue has a lot to do with privacy.
Yeah.
And I don't, I know the captain would be the first one to agree that it's not about privacy, I think it's about safety. And whatever cameras we have around the city of Deltona, and like you said, you know, these are things that they can't say where they are or who has them. But they keep the city safe. That's how they, how they find out who the people that come into the city, which most of the time, they don't, they're not even Deltona residents, that's how they catch them. Because they can keep track of what cars come in from all the entrances that the city of Deltona has. And I don't have a problem with, you want to go invade my privacy, that's fine with me, as long as I'm being kept safe and my family's being kept safe. And I think one of the issues with, with your HOA members were the privacy. And also the access to stuff like that. So I'm pretty sure Captain McDaniel can probably have a meeting, attend, even if it's a private meeting among your HOA, and give more explanation. Because one of our, like he said, one of our other HOAs, which is in District 3 already has it. And they welcome it with open arms. They didn't even have an issue with privacy or whatever. And we started this when the Ring program came on board, and Sheriff's Department was actually giving them away for free when they first came out. So that you can hook it up, so the Sheriff's Department can have access to your system from their, their site. If something happens within your area, and they ask you, can we look at your... Do you want to explain it? I don't want to take away.
Yeah, so what are, we have a real-time crime center. If we have a crime in progress or a crime that has occurred, we can send out a Ring notification. If you have your Ring set up, you'll get an email from us saying something has occurred between the hours of this time. Would you share your footage with us? You can review it if you think it's of note. You can send it to us. If you don't, then you don't.
And so because of that, at the next board meeting that we have, because we already kind of discussed it over email, I would like to put forth, using some type of Ring camera, because they do have a cloud backup. And I think that we can convert our, they have an old-school telephone line that we pay a lot of money for every month. I think maybe get some type of internet connection and phone line, and then, like you said, you know, if there's a crime that occurs in our community, if someone like gets through the gates somehow, you know, there's some way that we can release that to help, I think. I know our residents is very popular, they want cameras. It's just, I'm not sure how popular it is to have it hooked up to anything. That's where kind of the discussion went.
Well, I think, I think what the sergeant that came to your meeting was suggesting was a camera at the gates. Not at each person's home, because once they pass through the gate, then you already capture them, right?
That's what they said, yeah.
And so, I can say this, because it's already, you know, this was in newspapers and in public, but one of the people that got caught, when he approached a younger, one of our young students here, was because somebody, a resident, called and said, I have a picture of that guy riding a bike in my neighborhood, and it came through their ring. And so that helped, you know, the Sheriff's Department, you know, zoom in on that person. So definitely, I think you just, guys needed, because since you have gates, it should just be on your, you know, your gates.
Right.
Because once they go in, you know.
Also, you know, my house is actually in the entrance where the gates are, so I have some personal preferences on how that's all set up as well, because, you know, all these cars, I'm outside the gate, so like, I, if you, if you come through, you'll see. I don't want that camera, like, facing my house at all. I've been very vocal about that in the community.
Well, that's something that you would have to discuss with the person who installs your camera. And then the rest is, you know, about hooking it up and connecting to the Sheriff's Department. But if, when you have your HOA meeting, if you let me know, I'll send an invitation to Captain McDaniel's, and if he can't make it, just like the last time Captain Marino couldn't make it, he will send somebody to speak to you about it.
And did you say you're going to reach out to Rusty, the president, and, and ask about the, you were going to reach out to all the HOA presidents or someone?
I left it in the hands of the commission to reach out to all the HOAs. I sent an email to Mr. Peters to kind of set something up, so.
So in our district, it's two HOAs have been involved already, yours and the other one, and then I don't know if Rachel wants to bring it up to the Edge Water condos, even though you spoke to the captain about other stuff, right, about your condos. So, I mean, it's only a plus for the safety of your residents in there.
We have to have electric at the entrance, because that's why you have to install it. You have to say we have to pay for it to install it.
Not necessarily with some of the new technology we have. So the technology that we have up at the HOA that we're referring to, there's no power.
Tell them how does that work?
Solar.
Solar?
Solar and batteries.
But it'd have to be a Wi-Fi network?
Yeah, they, they have AirCards.
I mean, I would definitely like to bring that up to our board, because, you know, we're, there's not really an entity like us anywhere else in Deltona with the 312 and without a 240 relay side. And that's 500, I can't even add that right now, 550 something units. You know, so it's, and we only have one way in and one way out.
Yeah, not to, not to get into the weeds on this, because we can get into those during this, this next meeting, but the benefit of these cameras, and they're not necessarily cameras, they take still photographs. So a car goes by, it senses the reflection of the tag, it takes a photo of the tag, and it sends us alerts if the vehicle is stolen, if the owner of the vehicle has a suspended driver's license, if the owner of the vehicle has an arrest warrant, any parameters that we can set. So we're not looking at every tag that gets captured, we're only looking at the ones that are alerted to us. So for example, you have a stolen car that hits off of your license plate reader coming into your neighborhood at 3:00 in the morning. What are they doing there?
They don't.
They're up to no good. So that alerts every deputy that's
It's awesome.
In Deltona, saying a stolen car just entered your neighborhood. And then they can immediately deploy resources, because they know what the cars in there are doing.
Really?
It's committing crimes. So that's what some of the technology is used for. And I understand a lot of, you get that 50/50 of, I like it, I don't like it, it's my privacy. And I, I can understand that, but most of it is just not really having a firm grasp of what exactly we're doing. And that's, that's just all in education, and we're more than happy to educate them.
Right, and that could be part of your HOA meeting next time, if you let me know?
We're not HOA, we're COA.
Oh, okay.
Totally.
So if you invite us to your next meeting, I'll be, you know, pass it over.
We're going to have a meeting the first week of March, and if it's something, I'll talk with Charlie, and we'll discuss it. We would love to have you guys tell the residents about it, and I don't see anything wrong.
Yeah, and we'll forward the invitation to the Sheriff's Department, and they'll, they'll take it from there.
That's a, it's a good spot, where we are too, down by Lake Shore, you know, when the PTA get off a I-4 and they want to hide, they rip out Lake Shore Drive, we know it, but it'd be great, I think it'd be awesome.
Yeah, there is. We only have three entrances. There's no other two.
Great, so that'll be your job to let us know when your next one is, and I'll forward the invite to Captain McDaniel's, and then he'll, if he can make it, he will, and if not, then he'll send somebody else.
Yeah, they'd be great.
Like they've always done.
Give that information.
Okay, so Captain, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you for having me.
I know you've had a long day, so you don't have to stay for the remainder of the meeting.
Any other questions for me before I leave?
Did you have something to speak to him about in private?
We did.
We, yep.
Okay.
I hope to see you tomorrow morning, Rachel.
We'll do my best.
Great.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, thank you for being here. So the next one on the agenda is, it's the department that keeps our, you know, streets and everything code, and they're doing a great job in District 3. So I want to call Richard, who is the Assistant Director of Code Compliance, it's no longer code enforcement, it's been changed to code compliance. So I'm going to let Richard talk to you and share information of what has been happening in District 3. And I also want to let you know that Richard has been forwarding a report to me to let me know everything that has been going on in District 3, and what has been corrected, and what's pending, and stuff like that. So I'll let him talk to you a little bit more on that.
All right, so my name's Richard Lovett, I'm the Assistant Director of Code Compliance. So as part of code compliance, where you just don't do the codes, we do animal control, and we also do the trash or the solid waste. We do everything that's, that falls under any kind of code within a city is handled by one officer. So the idea is I can put more officers in a certain area, and the way we have the city split up is we have the city split up into five zones. And I have a zone, a zone officer in every, in every zone, seven days a week, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. So there's only like four days a year that we close for physical holidays. Besides that, we are on every day of the week. So one of the things that we've been doing, and we changed a lot, last year we went through a lot of meetings, we did make a lot of changes. Not only name changes, we changed a lot of what we were doing. We are in the middle of, I've got a lot of staff that's in training right now, so we upped our training, our staff. We went back up to levels that we were at before to give adequate services to the citizens that were out there. Some of the new things that we're starting to do is, is like, the Vice Mayor said, is one of the things that I can share with her now, is I can share statistics on what we're doing. I have an analyst that puts together, and I get weekly reports from her, what the officers are doing, what kind of cases they're open. So we look at that, we see what they're doing, how they're handling it, and we see what kind of cases are going on in each district. The idea is we can start getting a little bit of a better handle on what's going on in certain areas, so we know where to pull different employees to doing. But besides that, I think her, the Vice Mayor District has seen the most that we've done. Last time we had one of these meetings, it got brought up to, and they asked us about the houses that were at the corner of North Normandy and Saxon. And if you look at that now, you'll see it's nothing but an empty field. I explained to them, we were in the process, we were working on something, we had some stuff we were working, we were working with CRA to get it done. We actually went to the owner of that property, he had seven houses. We gave him, I think, four months to give us a solid answer of what he was going to do, either to tear them down or bring them back up to code, and get it looking back livable again. We didn't think it was fair for the corner to stay. We kept hearing it was going for sale, this person was buying it, so they kept looking times. So finally, we said, you know what, this is your end date, you have until this date to get it done. So we actually moved forward, took that one to magistrate, we gave them a set amount of days, and that's why those houses are down. So one of the other ones that we worked with doing that same thing is Deltona Boulevard and Enterprise Road. There was the empty gas station for years that was, kept getting your feet eat, kept getting, the boards were coming down. We did the same thing with them, we went back and forth with their attorneys and made a discussion, this is what you have to do, this is what you got, this is what the city's expecting, if you want to keep that building there. So that was their agreement, was to take the building down. We tried to get them to take the whole way, driveway down and everything, to make it just a vacant lot and let it grow back, you know, and go from there, but they really wanted to keep the asphalt driveway. So we said, okay, if you're going to keep the asphalt driveway, you got to keep it maintained. We want ballards up, because we don't want people pulling into those properties and doing stuff that's not supposed to be done, and you got to maintain it. So that's where we are with them, we're keeping them straight on it. One of the things I heard you brought up is the old bank next to the post office. So that is a active business that they run out of there. So it's usually, it's drivers. So that's why you don't see a lot of business going on out there, and it looks like it's closed. They do, it's a lot of overnight business that they do.
And the ATM?
Huh?
And their ATM, is active?
Yep, they do repairs on ATMs, so that's why you don't see a lot going on there, and it looks like it's vacant. Yeah, because we went and talked to them, had them fix the building. And that's another thing that we're doing, and I just, I just told the Vice Mayor tonight, another one that we're looking at in her district that we just started today, I've got two officers that are working strictly on commercial businesses. And our idea is we've gone completely down Deltona Boulevard, we've talked to every single one of those business owners, and we said, this is what you got to do to come back in compliance, A, B, and C. I think our last business owner that has not complied, went to the magistrate last month, we gave him 60 days to comply, to get it back up. Our thing is these businesses need to be held to the same standards that every other citizen's being held to. These are businesses that have been allowed to just, you know, these were built in the 60s and early 70s, and they've been there for a long time, and they needed a lot of maintenance.
They need to go.
That, that I can't do. There, there are some that we do, we do have some that's working on, you have the old Chevron station that's there. We are working with them, through the magistrate. We are looking at either they're going to get that back in compliance, or we're going to look at taking it down. So that, that's one of the things we're working on. They do have an engineer, so we know what they are working forward to keep moving it, but it's not at the pace that, that they agreed upon. So we are trying to hold their feet to the fire, because those businesses have been allowed to be like that for a long time, and we don't think it's fair, so we're trying to get that. The latest one that y'all will see, and it's going to take some time, is that, like you said, coming across on Saxon Boulevard, as soon as you come into the city, you see that gas station on the left-hand side. So my officers have started working on that one, we're going to do the same thing on that one. You're either going to fix it or tear it down, one of the two. So that's the things, we're, we're working on a lot of more commercials where we never done. I'm thinking within the next four months, I'll finally be fully staffed to where I have all my officers, I have them trained, I have them out in the field, and at that point, I'll have people focusing on these main streets for y'all, not just in the actual artillery streets, auxiliary streets, but they'll be on the main streets. So we're, we've got a plan, we're moving forward, I'm just trying to get everybody trained so we can get in there. But the businesses has been the ones we're not, we're not backing off on. We, like I said, we finished Deltona Boulevard, we're working up Providence, we've gotten, I think, on Providence, we stopped at Normandy, as far as we've gotten north. We've got, you've got to imagine when we're dealing with these businesses, it's a lot of cases, a lot of time, and a lot of stuff. And then we just started down Saxon, so we're going to start moving that way. So you're going to start seeing it, it is taking some time, and, you know, especially when we're dealing with commercial businesses, it does take a lot longer, but we are looking to get the results. I'm hoping by next year, we'll have all the commercial businesses on a one, we've already gone through them one time, and then they're going to be on a yearly schedule to where every year, I have two officers that just do nothing but go straight back to commercials. Anything that's a problem, we write it up and we go from there again. So we're going to keep them on a constant schedule from here on out.
And I want to say that they've been pretty well working with the city. I don't think we've had any issues with a lot of the businesses there, so whatever, you know, they have to, whatever work they have to do to come in compliance, they have been working with the city. Some have even reached out to us and said, so, help me, what is it that I need to do and how can I do it? So I think we've been pretty lucky with some, most of the businesses on Deltona Boulevard. I don't think we've had much challenges.
No, we've got one that's looking at putting in a brand-new hole, they're going to have to re, completely redo their parking lot, and you're talking about $30,000 expense to them. So we're trying to work with them to give them that time, because that is a heavy expense. But at the same time, we can't, we were telling them, you can't let it go, because it's going to cause further issues down the road. So we're working, but we're setting guidelines at, at a certain point where it's got to be done.
Any questions? And I know that you probably see the outside, because I know that they don't go into Twin Lakes, and they don't go into your area, but you do travel around, so you see all the work that, that they have been doing, so.
We actually do go in the subdivisions.
In Twin Lakes?
Mm-hmm.
Really?
Yep. Yeah, we've got a couple of the properties in there.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, every, we've got codes to get into the gates, so we go in there every so often and run through. Usually, everything y'all are all taken care of.
Yeah, because if you find something, I would argue that our property manager probably should.
They're, they're pretty good on it. But yeah, we, we do go through the subdivisions, you know, because we do know that sometimes people move out, things happen. One of the things we're doing now is we give reports every day from the trash company on too much trash that's being put out there, stuff they quoted. So as soon as we get that report, that report's dispatched to the officers, so the officers are handling that the next day. So as soon as we're getting this information, we're right on top of it. We've tried to change it up, we used to have about a, with trash, and right away, it used to be about a five-day turnaround from when you first saw it to when you picked it up. Now we're down to 48 hours. So we're trying to cut it down as best we can. We figured that's the best way we can cut it down. I've worked with Waste Pro to go, hey, this is what we want, this is what we want to do, how do you, how can we do it to make it work for both of us? So when we get those reports, we put the cases in, and then we give them a time that they can pick it up. So we're, we're trying to cut the time down that y'all see this stuff out there as much as possible.
Any other questions?
So if you ever have any issues down there, all you got to do is call us too, you know, on top of that.
Mm-hmm.
But.
So do you, do you see someone doing the animal control too?
Yes.
We do animal control too.
I had to compliment you guys, and the two times, I've been with them, so we had an alligator.
Oh, wait a minute.
You had the alligator in the pool, yes, I remember that.
Can we have that, wait, I need to have that on speaker, wait, wait.
I'm sorry, I'm not loud enough, I could talk.
I need, I need that to be more.
I just have to compliment you guys, because we did have a baby alligator in our pool, and they handled it wonderfully, and then we had a rooster, and they also chased after that thing, and I did watch them chase after.
Didn't you also have a bear?
What's that?
Didn't you also have a bear?
I had a bear twice. Yeah, and they just passed through property, they don't stop, that's why we don't, you know, we tell people not to have bird feeders and stuff like that, but the, the gator was awesome.
Yeah, we'll go, we'll go and remove those. If they're under four feet, FWC will allow us to remove them with no questions. If they're over four feet, they'd rather their trappers to them.
We had one, we did have one that a trapper had to come out for. It wasn't actually on our property, it was underneath the boardwalk, but he was badly, badly wounded, so, and they were out quickly too, but the gator in our pool was, I was applauding them how fast.
The one in, in the, crossed the road.
Oh, yeah, that was the same one, yeah.
I'm glad you guys have that problem all the time. Like, Lake Monroe is like right there, that's where they live.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, you know, we're always happy to hear feedback when, when you're satisfied with the job of, of our, our staff, so we're glad to hear that.
Thank you.
Well, let me just put this here real quick. So Richard was the last person to speak, and I just want to thank you guys for being out here with us. There's so many questions that people have for me, and then when I have the meetings, I really would, for those of you watching this video from home, you, you know, you're welcome to send me an email if you have questions on this meeting that took place, on anything that was covered on this agenda. But it's still nice when you guys come out and mingle and have a conversation about things with us. Our next meeting, I'm hoping to see if we can take down to Edge Water condos, so that your residents can, can be part of it, and then I can probably bring some, the person who's in charge of that Echo project there. I know we promised to get your residents involved in that project, so, you know, I'm going to look forward to that. gonna look forward to that. If you guys have any more questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer. There is a questionnaire, if you can fill it out. It mostly wants to know, "How was the session? You know, what did you like, what didn't you like? What else do you want? What else do you want us to bring you?" We're trying to... I'm trying to do town hall meetings, not only with staff, because the reason why I invite staff is so everybody knows who's behind the scenes, and what is it they do, and who's responsible for that, right? But I also wanna bring people to speak on education, on health, and other things that you wanna know about, right? So, you guys, put it here, let me know what speakers you want, social security issues, health issues, and stuff like that. I'd be more than happy to reach out to people like that and bring them to the town hall meetings. Just, you know, fill out the information, and I will bring it and give it to our secretaries. And then there's another sheet of a health questionnaire, that's for Evan Health. We're gonna have a focus meeting at the center March 1st with Evan Health, and what they wanna know is, "What are we missing? What else can we do to better your health, and what other services can we provide to make it easier for you, you know, to take care of your health?" So, if you can answer that form as well, you know, I'd be appreciated. And then I have, on behalf of Family Health Center, I have some test kits, so please pick them up before you leave. And on behalf of the city of Deltona, we have the sanitizer spray for your hands. Again, take one in with you. And thank you again so much, we really appreciate you coming out, we'd love to hear your input, regardless of what it is, and we always try our best to meet you 100% of the way. This is what we're here for. So, you have my name, my number, reach out to me, and whatever I can help with, I will definitely do that, okay? So, thank you so much again, for those of you who are watching this video of tonight's town hall meeting, thank you for watching.